We'll go around and introduce the members at the head table. Brian?
I'm Brian Rose, I'm the town planner.
Steve Dutton, alternate.
Galen Brook, recording secretary.
Alan Jaten, chair.
Carlos Adams, member.
Earl Foley, alternate.
I'm going to be votes for the next few minutes, the two alternates are-
Please quiet the audience, please.
Excuse me?
Please quiet the audience, please.
I left my gavel at home. Apologize for that, and I'll bring it in if it's big. Anyways, welcome. In the first few minutes, let's just take care of some action items. We have the minutes from... Gentlemen, welcome.
Welcome.
We have the minutes from our meeting of September 23rd, 2010. Are there any corrections? Omissions, additions? From members of the board? Seeing none? No comments, omissions, or whatever? Will somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes as written.
Well, here's a second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Lowell, seconded by Phil. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Standing.
We had a pretty wild house that night, I guess. Second item on our agenda is a... An email that we received referenced the third item on our whole business agenda this evening. Brian, can you bring us up to speed on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the email basically just requested that the excavation project be... With the application be withdrawn. So, that appears as the third item on the agenda tonight. So, rather than if anyone was here to listen to that hearing, rather than go through the whole meeting and then tell everybody at the end that this application's been withdrawn, we wanted to make the board aware and the public aware at the beginning. And then also, if the board wants to just formally act to, you know, state, yes, we agree, or we accept the withdrawal, or whatever, then I think that might have been done in the past for other withdrawals.
I believe in a withdrawal if, or lack of process, we've... There's been a motion to deny the application.
Okay.
Without prejudice. Go move.
Second.
Moved by Phil, seconded by Carlos. Any discussion on that motion? Call for a vote. We have all our board members, so two alternates would not be voting on this. All those in favor say aye?
Barbara's not here.
Barbara and Tim.
Tim's not here.
Tim's not here.
Your math is suspect.
Been a long day. Yes, I apologize for that, gentlemen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would you like to bring us up to speed on the conceptual review? Application, the proposal? And what would you like us to do with it, Brian?
Mr. Chair, it's basically an attempt to make the application process a little bit more understandable for the applicants. I've written up a new application form, some procedure guidelines, and process document checklist, and then some submittal content requirements that the applicants can use when they are coming to the town wanting to do a conceptual. This format is what I'm hoping to do for all of the applications for the town. I just wanted to start with the conceptual, since that one's kind of an easy one, and get your buy-off on this new application process and format, and then move forward with the other applications after that. So, just kind of wanted to get any of your comments, if you had any, based on what you saw, and if not, maybe an acceptance of the new format and that.
Members of the board? Go right around the room. Lowell?
I thought the layout was pretty easy to follow, and I think having that little full chart in there was a good addition.
Steve?
Yeah, I like it. I don't have any... Have any other comments, other than...
Phil?
What I can say, there was nothing that jumped out to me that should be not applied.
Carl?
Yeah, the thing I was looking for that I found later on was not binding. At the very end, it says not bind, either board or applicant. So, I was fine with it.
Jim?
Well, having sat through some conceptials where the people were just using our time when they haven't thought about their project, which I don't enjoy doing, I'm happy to impose some obligation of them to get their acts together before they come into a conceptual. So, if this moves us in that direction, I'd be delighted, which isn't a comment on some that do come in fully prepared, but some ask questions that show they haven't even read the ordinance. I don't think we can even entertain those.
Okay. Carlos?
Yeah, I like it. I think it's a big step forward, and I think it will help a lot.
Barbara?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. The consensus is that we're all pleased with the results of this and look forward to seeing some of the other forms that you might be working on to improve both the readability and their functionality. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We'll go right to Main Street. Sign permit request for map 34, lot 36, Main Street, Royal Cafe. Action needed. It's in your tonight's packet. On page three and four. Or three, excuse me. Brian?
Okay. Mr. Chair, this is a... And members of the board, this is a sign permit for an already existing sign that's been installed, and they're coming for the permit after the fact. The... All of the size of the sign and requirements of the zoning ordinance are met with the existing sign. The reason that it's coming to you is because it's in the Village Commercial area and requires a planning board approval. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Members of the board?
Is there a current sign on the building now? Like a banner?
It is an existing sign, yes. They're applying for the permit now, after they were harked upon by the zoning enforcement officer.
Other members of the board? That'll entertain some action? Motion by Mr. DeVenter?
Second.
Seconded by Carlos Adams. Any discussion on the motion? All heads here? So, the alternates are not...
We're missing Tim.
Still missing Tim.
Where is he anyways?
He's not here.
Is he still on vacation? Did they lose him in Italy or something?
He's back, but his wife told me that he would not be attending tonight. Okay, so...
All right. Steve will vote first, then. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item four is a request to appoint a planning board member to the Economic Development Council. Action needed. Obviously, it's a letter in your correspondence packet, reference that, and there was a short discussion in our last meeting about that. I find that my Tuesday evenings are being devoted to a charitable event at Camp Allen in Bedford on Tuesday evenings, which is when they meet, and I hate to permit me to do that. Unfortunately, I've been looking for a new head. Is anybody willing to take a look at it, or ask a question of what it's all about? Dan Reedy is the current chair. They have a couple of things ongoing that they sponsor and work with, but it really is a liaison with the Economic Development Council so that we're more aware of some of the things that go there first before they get here. But there's some preemptive information. Members of the board?
And they meet every Tuesday?
Once a month.
Once a month.
I can't do Tuesdays.
How about a motion to appoint Tim?
No, you want him to do CIP.
Oh, that's true.
Well, he's pretty much said that he doesn't want to do that this year, so we're going to be looking for somebody else to do that this coming year also.
And Jim rhymes with Tim.
Don't assume my longevity.
As far as... Does it have to be a board member, or can it be an alternate? I believe it can be an alternate.
Whatever the board chooses.
I think that's been known before.
I know most of us serve in some other capacity in town, one way or another. Anybody would like... Would anybody like to volunteer?
No.
Then I'll accept nominations from the board members.
I'm not sure you can do that.
If Tim would do it, he'd request that he not be on CIP. I can tell you that right now.
I think we better have a discussion with him.
Okay.
When is the next meeting?
Brian? I believe it's the second or third Tuesday of the month. It's usually the Tuesday prior-
It's the fourth Tuesday of the month.
The fourth Tuesday of the month?
So, it's the same week as our meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Same week as the planning board meeting.
Tuesday evening from 6:30 to about 8 o'clock?
It's going to be the 26th of October.
If somebody from the board is interested, I would certainly recommend that you go there and see what transpires and what they're working on before you make a commitment to it. I think that would be ideal. It's never been a large time commitment. It's more of an organizational kind of thing. And the town liaison is Derek Horn. About all I can say at the moment, we have several events upcoming. And we try to do some projects that are kind of in the background, or like trying to find somebody to occupy the mill, is one of the things that we've been working on. Haven't had any success there yet. Or other type of economic kind of things, like the rail trail has been... You've been to the Economic Development Council several times on the rail trail. Also, hiking trails have been mapped. There's all kinds of those little projects that supposedly promote some type of economic benefit to the community by people being here and actively participating in the community. Give it some thought. If there's some interest, please get in touch with Brian or Derek, and please attend the next meeting to see if it's something you might like to do.
What time are the meetings?
6:30. They're usually out by 8 o'clock.
And they're here, right?
They're right here in this same room, and I believe they're on the local cable television, community television network also. So, and I think you can also... The town website. It might stand corrected that you can get some of the minutes live through the town website now, including the planning board, if you can't... If you don't see them on the television. Does it pay the same as this board?
Yes.
Twice as much.
Yes, twice as much. There's a lot of accolades and thank yous.
We get them regularly.
Moving on. Is there anything in the correspondence that we need to discuss with the board? Brian, I didn't see anything on there. All of those will be addressed in some... Other than Jay, which was added, was the notice of intent to cut Pointer Fish and Game Club's snow road. Can you...
I have not seen that, actually, so that's something that just got put into the folder there, if you wanted to know anything about it.
Okay. During our 8:30 break? I'll look in the folder and see if there's any particular information on that.
I don't think Barbara heard you on that.
That's probably okay.
You might have to say that again.
What did he say?
I didn't say anything.
Come on. What... Could I ask for the minutes to be read back, please? I didn't get that part. Yeah. Oh, well, then it needs to be reset, so it can go in the minutes.
The minutes are not a transcript.
It's an asking as an interim.
Okay. Yes.
Is... Be on the correspondence, it says Fieldsboro County Design Shiret. Is that just the report, the final report, or is that something else?
You should have received in your packet a colored...
Oh, that's what it was referred to, okay.
Package of some of the basic concepts and some of the findings that the Shiret Committee came up with as a board, and as we reflect upon both master plan and other activities, whether we think about an invitation to the county to come here and talk to us about what they'd like to do, so that there's some concept in those activities. I know in the next few years, it's going to most likely come to some... Will be coming to this board in some fashion. So, if we're involved in a loop up front, it might very well benefit the community and the board here in terms of performance. They may ask us to... For some type of zoning amendment, because it's all zoned agricultural right now. Term of the... All the county properties. So, there may be some things that we'd like to talk to them about. At least we should send a volunteering letter to the county commissioners. Can we do that, Phil?
I don't see why not.
From you, Brian? Just to ask us, you know, would you like to come and talk to us about what you'd like to do in the future? Just so that there's some concert of events and activities here at the community level, too? We'll see what happens. Okay? I know there's been some interested... Since I served on the Shiret Committee, there has been some interested developers in private discussions with the county.
Well, and you might, just as a practical matter, want to wait till... Is our county commissioner up for election this year?
Carol Alden?
Yeah, I think she is.
Every year, there's one, I think.
Yes.
She's up this year, right? You might want to just wait till after the election. I mean, I don't... I'm not going to forecast the election results, but she's been pretty accurate and cognizant of the issues up there and...
And I see Tony Pappas about every Monday. So, I could certainly approach her directly. If that's what we needed to do, to try to make something happen. And I'm sure they'd welcome it, too. That answer that question, Lowell? Anything else on that correspondence list? Seeing none? Let's move right into our regular agenda under old business. Map nine, lot 33-7, 46, and 60. Subdivision review hearing for a proposed 17-lot, open space subdivision revised from 19 lots. Blackberry Woods LLC and William and Elizabeth Cordis owners. Montalona Road and Blackbrook Road zoned agricultural continued from September 9th, 2010. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This project is, as you stated, map nine, lots 33, 7, 40, and 60. Subdivision plat review for 17 lots. These lots are located between Montalona Road and Blackbrook Road. This is the property up here on the screen. There's the aerial of the property. It's approximately 1.41.55 acres. And the most part of the property will be dedicated as open space area and to not be further subdivided. Request is to subdivide it again, as I said, into 17 lots. This is the layout of the project. The southern two... The southern portions of the property have been left alone, and the northeastern corner is where the lots are going to be subdivided. This is a little bit of a zoom-in on that view of the northeast corner. This is the landscape plan for the project. Shows just basically where the trees will be planted along the public road. And there's a couple of pictures of the plat here, broken down into two pieces, which we can use for reference in our discussion later on if we need to. The key considerations on the project, they've got several wetlands on the project, and they've been working on how to deal with all the wetlands and the drainage. The board approved the yield plan for 17 lots, so that's what they're aiming for. The road on the project is a cul-de-sac, and it's longer than the normal allowed length, and so they're requesting a waiver on that. Opposed... Well, I'm sorry. I wrote it wrong on my thing. The proposed length is... Oh, I did... No, I did write it right. Proposed length for the cul-de-sac is 1,300 feet. The maximum length is 1,000 feet, so... Most of the lots that they're proposing are half-acre in size. The drainage, as I said, designs are proving to be a challenge, but they're... They've come up with some solutions to deal with that. The conservation commission has suggested that the town own the open space. They will be requesting that to selectmen consider this. They have not put that to the selectmen yet. All the remaining comments have been incorporated into the report as conditions of approval. As you'll note, there are several conditions, mostly plan changes that just need to be finalized. The applicant did make a very quick final push to address several of the comments that we had. However, there still are a few remaining out there that we just incorporated into the report as conditions of approval that they would meet precedent to getting their final sign-off. The DPW does have some concern about the maintenance of the proposed drainage and detention systems, the ability of the town to handle the additional responsibility with their budget being tightened. The Scataquag Land Conservancy has not formally agreed to accept any responsibility of taking maintenance control over the land. As I stated before, the request has not gone before the board's selectmen yet either to discuss accepting it as town property. Regarding that, and I know, Barbara, you brought this up to me earlier in the week, my suggestion was that a condition of approval could be imposed, stating that appropriate approvals would need to be obtained from the Scataquag Land Conservancy and the board's selectmen. And if these approvals could not be obtained, then a homeowners association and their associated covenants, conditions, and restrictions would have to be formed in order to take care of the open space property and the drainage and landscaping areas within the development, and that these documents be submitted to the town planning department and town attorney for their review and approval. So, I'm going to leave that for some discussion later. I'm sure we'll be able to get into that. Recommendation given to you in your report is that we hold the public hearing, hold the applicants... Hear the applicant's presentation, hold a public hearing, resolve any remaining issues. There are a few waivers that the applicant has requested, and those are noted in your staff report in A through E on the first page of the report. And then the recommendation is to approve the subdivision subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and any others that the board sees fit to impose. And I'll turn the time back over to the board.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, do we have any immediate questions? Yes.
Brian, it's part of your slide that you had. You said that there were a couple of things that had come up as a result of our last review of this, and the applicant didn't have an opportunity to get theirs done, so they're part of the conditions. What specifically were those, do you recall?
Well, basically, it's just the... Megan had done an extensive review on their plan and had sent me a big list of comments. Those... That list of comments was something like 53 comments long? 54 comments, maybe? That... We sent all those comments to the applicant, and they had gone through and addressed most all that they could. What couldn't be addressed at that time was the... Basically, the conditions precedent from 6 through 24 as comments on their plan or on their drainage report that just still needed to be addressed.
And am I correct? You've got this condition approval up here on the board. That's not on the paper copy, correct?
That is not. So, that would be an additional condition that would need to be added if the board wants to do that.
Other members of the board? Jim?
Well, I have a Barbara-like comment and then a substantive comment.
I'm going to take that as an insult.
I don't know. I was about to say, I mean that very complimentary.
Yeah. You're on a roll tonight.
You're beginning to convince me on many things. But there's 27 conditions just here, plus more there, some of which are pretty important. And Barbara might say, and maybe I agree, do we want to approve a plan even conditionally with 28 conditions? Or do you want them come back, come back, so we approve it? A cleaner plan? I... I suppose that maybe as a hypothetical. You guys can debate it. But the main one, and Megan has expressed her views, is the drainage. And I know the report says that the applicant's preference, it's in your key considerations, number three, would like to avoid a homeowners association. Yeah, and we'd like to have the town avoid taking on obligations that stretch our resources. And given those two considerations, I think we have an obligation to look to the town side and say that we understand your concern, applicant, but unless you can present a compelling case that it's not going to impose an excessive burden on the town, we should require a homeowners association that assumes obligations for maintenance of some of these drainage structures that are really made necessary by a difficult area that they're... In which they're choosing to develop.
Phil? Whoops, go ahead.
No, no, I'm... I'll stop there.
No. And a follow-up to that, because usually when we have the homeowner... I guess the concern that I have is approving this without even knowing where this is going as far as is there a homeowners association, or is there not a homeowners association? When we do have homeowners associations, the final documents are always reviewed by the planning board. And in this case, we wouldn't know whether there is a homeowners association, because the way this approval would be, there could be, and that would be approved by the town attorney, which is not something that we've done in the past. The boards always reviewed that after it came back. And as a matter of fact, the last one we had, Jim is the one that did make some suggested changes on the... On that agreement.
You get what you pay for with attorneys, by the way.
Well, I understand that. But that's why... That's why we have several of them review it.
Question for Brian?
Yes, Barbara?
Obviously, the applicant knew by virtue of the comments from Megan that they hadn't had an opportunity to incorporate all of them in tonight. Was the applicant... Um, was the applicant aware, um, that the issue of holding the land and the fact that the PLC in the town hadn't actually even heard this or approved it? Did, was the applicant aware of that before tonight?
I believe they were, but, uh, I mean, I think that's a question for them to answer.
All right, but as far as you know, they were?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, 'cause I'm just asking, 'cause it does appear that there's a lot outstanding, so I'm sort of surprised it's still on the agenda, but, okay.
Any other members aboard? Megan, would you like to address just, I won't forget you. Uh, Megan, could, would you address the, uh, DPW comments, review comments, and how you feel about the content of what needs to be take, what needs to be adjusted or corrected or whatever?
Um, I had done my review, um, say, a week ago or something, and, and partly the reason they haven't all been addressed, honestly, is, is partly my fault. The plans were given to me, I would say, a good two weeks before I got to it. Um, so I finally got to it, had a longer list than I planned, uh, you know, it was whatever, say sixty comments, but honestly, they weren't, there weren't many major issues. As much as it sounds like a lot, it's not like the plan was in awful shape. I'm very nitpicky, you know, I need every construction detail to be right, you know, so, so it was a lot of minor things. Um, they cranked that out in like twenty-four hours and got me back twenty, I had twenty comments. So they did everything they could to address them, partly due to me, you know, waiting too long. So, um, just so you know that that's where it's at, you know, so we, we, there are still like, let's say, twenty comments. They do, they are not major comments, they're all very minor comments, you know, missing a few things, show me where the ballads are for cisterns and, you know, I mean, just a lot of little things. Um, my major drainage concerns, I had spoken to them with, um, you know, the features that are being proposed, and some of these are new features because of the new AOT rules, and we talked about that, and, um, so, I mean, I had some discussions with them on the phone, and we, we met with them, so I, I've been through all of that. And I'm comfortable with where the plan is at. I did tell Brian that typically this board does not like to review a plan with a lot of comments, even if they are minor. I, I mean, I did tell him that, but we thought that because there weren't any major issues, he'd move forward with the, you know, recommended approval and the board could decide. Um, so I mean, you know, I understand that, that if you don't wanna go that way and you wanna wait for one more clean set of plans, that's fine. I just wanna explain that it's, it's partly due to me not getting to it soon enough, and I think it very well could've been an even cleaner plan had I done it a little sooner. Um, so I think, you know, I think that's it. The biggest issue, you know, was the maintenance thing, which, again, I don't know how you deal with that with this one site. The point is, it's just as these come up, I'm constantly sitting down with Carl, and now with these new AOT features, they're a little different than, um, the older features. But again, it just requires, they all require a good amount of maintenance, and, you know, honestly, I think DPW's behind on maintaining the ones we have. We need to get in a, a real formal maintenance program of these drainage features, you know, ponds and swales. And, um, I, it just needs to be set on the record here, and Carl needs to talk about the board of selectmen level that, you know, there's gonna come a point where we're gonna have to kind of reevaluate and, and, 'cause yeah, it's gonna, it, it does put a strain on us, you know, with, with the budget constraints. We are always trying to do as much in-house stuff as we can, but when we get pulled to do other in-house stuff, we get pulled away from other things like maintenance. So, you know, it's, it's a balance, and, um, you know, obviously, it would be great if someone else was maintaining it and not us, but I don't know how the board wants to handle that with this one subdivision. It's just something that keeps coming up, and we're gonna have to find a, only a deal with that long-term.
Jim?
Well, I guess I'd like to develop a little better record on that issue through Megan, but I don't, we don't do it right now, but I wanna come back to that. Because if we're gonna use that as a established basis for imposing conditions, I think we need Megan to put some more flesh on that concern about the capacity of the town, the increase in demand beyond the normal increase caused either by the complexity of this development or the new AOT rules that, you know, we wouldn't have anticipated as we develop our town capacity, um, and what the alternative possibilities are to minimize that obligation in the town. And the analysis is really a scattered and premature one. If we're gonna impose a condition that's different than the condition that we've been, you know, done before, where the town has assumed responsibility for these improvements, we have to show some basis for treating them. We should show some basis, or we have to, some basis for treating them differently. And I think Megan has told us that, which I, I think we need to create a little better record for that. We can come back and do it later, but is Megan fair warning if it's coming?
Barbara?
Um, a couple of quick questions for Megan and then for Brian. Um, in regards to the drainage maintenance agreement, this is for this new AOT rain garden type stuff, right? Are these?
There aren't rain gardens in this, but, um...
This is a little different, isn't, is this a little different, or is this?
It's slightly different, it's an infiltration basin versus a typical, you know, detention basin that just holds the water and releases it. The AOT rules now require a certain amount of infiltration.
Do we have, you know, in the, in conjunction with all the previous projects that we have, either town or private, that have created these drainage issues, do we have any drainage maintenance agreements in place that are for the same type of drainage system that's proposed in this development?
I don't know if we have an infiltration basin yet, except we have some rain gardens, we have...
I know, there's a rain garden.
You know of it, like Rite Aid, um, but most of the private developments are the underground systems.
So we don't, so as far as you know, we don't actually have an, an in-place drainage maintenance agreement for an infiltration system at this time?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Um, the previous systems are, are basic detention ponds, and I don't even know if, um, you know, at that time, we were requiring drainage maintenance, you know, guidelines. Um, I had just brought it up, saying, you know, if these are the new systems, it would be nice to get something from the engineer saying, this is what is expected of the town to do, you know, just as a guideline, because again, it's something we need to stay on top of and, you know, perform those, um, you know, that type of maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna take Carlos first, Jim. Carlos?
I think as a town, we need to get out of the business of maintaining drainage infrastructure. I mean, this, this is a major shift in, in AOT rules and the way that they handle it. It's no longer grass swales and simple basins. I mean, they're more sophisticated, um, structures, and they're more, much more labor-intensive, they, they need, and they require maintenance, and I don't know why the town should be assuming that burden, uh, for these types of private developments. It doesn't make any sense to me, and it's gonna get more and more demanding, you know, as, as we move forward, right?
Are you suggesting that it has to be some kind of homeowners association to maintain the system?
Yeah, I do, yes.
To some degree?
Yeah, I do, absolutely.
All right. Jim, back to Jim.
Oh, I, I'm, I don't wanna prolong this till we really come back to it, but the other component that I, I think we can have Megan educate us on is, um, you do a risk analysis in, in any project, what the cost is of doing things and what the risk is if you don't. So what's, what's, I don't have a good handle on the risk of failure if they're not maintained with these new types of, um, erosion or drainage structures compared to the old ones, 'cause we saw them fail all the time, and we're used to that concept.
I'd like to hear a little, a few words from the Conservation Commission, 'cause David's had his hand up here for, David?
David Neiman. David Neiman, Conservation Commission. I'd like to briefly explain why the Conservation Commission was proposing that this town be taken by the land in an easement called, by the PLC. Fill you in on a little bit of information on where things are with that, and then finally address, uh, on a very important point that has been raised here in several ways, particularly by Mr. Raymond. First of all, the reason for doing this is, if you look at the nineteen ninety-seven Gothstown master plan, which this committee led the effort to develop, you look at the two thousand five, was two thousand five, wasn't it, rewrite of that master plan, which this board led the development of and the community weighed in on, both of those clearly identify the complete lack of any kind of recreational facility in the northeastern portion of the town. Both of those master plans have said, we should try to find something, we should try to kind of come up with something for the residents in that part of town, which has been one of the fastest-growing parts of town. We have an opportunity here because of the unique character of the open space that's being proposed in this development proposal. It's very large, a hundred and twenty acres plus. It has been actively used by residents in the area as a hiking trail. It's absolutely beautiful land, particularly the cordless part that hasn't been logged. If you have been on that, you should go see it, it's absolutely lovely. We have an opportunity to create a passive recreation area where the citizens in Gothstown have identified in our master plans by the town accepting the ownership of this easement. I understand very much the concerns of transferring expenses and commitments to the town. As a taxpayer, I don't like that either, and I'm very glad that this board is concerned with that. But please consider that, you know, there, there's a, a range and a spectrum of considerations. Drainage, I understand, is an issue, but also things like the stewardship and the monitoring of it. In this case, an outside professional organization, the PLC, would assume at least that aspect of the responsibility. Having it in town ownership is really the best approach to provide a recreational facility to the citizens of the town. If it belongs to a homeowners association, you know, that's, that's up to them to decide. Most of the open space areas that have gone to homeowners associations in the past are not open to the public for recreation. So we have a real opportunity here to acquire this large parcel for the benefit of our citizens without having to go out and purchase the land, and we know how difficult that is, we know how expensive that is. I think we should take advantage of this opportunity. Now, the discussion with the selectmen, I first requested on August twenty-fifth to be put on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting. At that time, I was told by town administration that while they're heading into budgeting discussions, they're kinda busy right now, are you in a big hurry? I said, no, but this is coming before planning by, by September twenty-second. Please give me in sometime. It never happened. I finally have sent back, this week, said, look, this has been slipping through the cracks, it's very important, I wanna be on next Monday's selectmen's meeting. I was told today, you cannot, because the agenda has been settled and closed for next Monday, but we'll try to get you on the twenty-fifth. If it would be helpful, I'd be willing to go to the open discussion session at the beginning of the meeting and at least mention it so the selectmen know it's coming up the following week. People think that would be a benefit, and we have been trying to get on the selectmen's agenda, and I just want that to be clear. Third part of this, the PLC has not formally agreed to accept the responsibility of taking the land. This is not exactly a complete statement, there's a great deal of confusion here on the side of the PLC, which unfortunately, I think, is due to the fact that the executive director, um, that was in place last year, is now gone, and information has slipped through the cracks. As a matter of fact, this went to the PLC a year ago. The PLC discussed this. This PLC has a committee called the Land Protection Committee, which discussed this, thought it had great merits, had multiple discussions along with the executive director, scheduled a sidewalk, did the sidewalk, wrote the report, recommended to the board of directors of the PLC that this project be accepted. Generally, the board of directors follows the Land Protection Committee's recommendations, 'cause that's the purpose of the Land Protection Committee. For reasons I cannot explain, but I assume is due to the departure of the executive director, they seem to have dropped the ball on that, so I plan on contacting members of the board to see if we can pick up the pace a little bit. The body in the PLC that makes these recommendations and approvals has already voted and recommended to do this. I think that their board of directors could act quickly and swiftly to bring this to a final evolution. And I think it's not, and I don't want anybody to think that this is something that's at the start, at the beginning, hasn't been dealt with. In fact, quite a lot of work has already been done. Um, and that, that pretty much is it in a nutshell, I think, that if we don't accept this recreation area, then we are ignoring something that has been part of our planning, master plans for years and years, saying that we wanna do this, we need to do this, here's an opportunity. It's fallen in our lap, I think we should take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, members of the board, have any questions for either David or Megan? Continue, before we open it to public?
I have one question for Megan. So there's really no history of how to maintain these new pollution systems, like scheduling, maintenance, cleaning, how that goes about?
Um, there's, well, DES published those new, the three books, I don't remember what the title of, I guess, man, I can practice in stormwater, manual, stormwater manual. Uh, in, in there, there, they give the different examples of the types of, you know, treatment and storage you can do, and they have recommended, um, maintenance procedures in there. So there's, there's some basis, you know, I mean, say we didn't get a, a maintenance schedule from them, I could easily go find the maintenance of that type of system from the DES stormwater manual and online and just doing some research. So it's out there, it's just to get it, or the exact development you're accepting would be nice. Um, we did make some changes to the original proposed drainage layout, not knowing if this would become an HOA or publicly maintained, um, we changed with, within using the new AOT rules, things like, um, you know, you used to just have your drainage go right to a detention basin, well, now it has to be kinda pre-treated, um, and they don't consider the treatment swales necessarily pre-treatment, so sometimes it's gotta go to like a sedimentation basin or four bay, something like that. So instead of that, to us, that's just another thing to clean out. And to send a crew out to clean out that is more time than if we send like our VAC on truck to go clean sumps out. So we opted for deep sump catch basins, so that's what we did. Preferably, I wanted just three-foot sumps, because we have, we do actually have the formal maintenance program of cleaning our catch basins. It's a crew that runs year-round, you know, doing drainage and shore, so we're, we're definitely on top of that, so that's why I prefer to do that type of system. Um, I wanted three-foot sumps, it's not allowed. AOT's looking for five and six-foot sumps. The rules are written that way because, in my opinion, it's more for towns that don't have the formal programs and they have to have that kinda factor of safety, you know, if, if not maintained, you've got the room for the sediment. Total overkill, in my opinion, in this town, because we are on top of it, but, and I talked to them about that, the engineer, and, um, I believe the AOT application is, um, under review, and when they get someone, or, or when they get someone assigned to the, to that application, I had offered to go up there and sit down with that person and discuss that, to see if we could get any kinda waiver, because I find it to be an extra expense for the dev- the developer to put it in, and then for us in the future to, not necessarily maintain it, but say there's ever a problem, you gotta replace it, you're just that much deeper into the water table, things like that. So, um, it's something I'm looking to try and work on, but, so just so you know, I mean, we are trying, I was trying to adjust the different drainage features to get to a point that's the easiest possible maintenance for us, should we take it over. Uh, I mean, I would like for it to not be, but if it, if that's how it is, I've tried to, you know, change the design with their help, uh, as much as we could, to, to get it more, uh, an easier, maintainable system, I guess.
Thank you.
Since we've had the opportunity to ask some questions of our consultants, I'd like to invite the applicant to, on hearing some of these discussions, to bring us up to speed.
Uh, the last time we were here in September, we continued to tonight. In the meantime, we have been to the Conservation Commission, uh, and have a recommendation that the areas of which were in the outer fifty feet of the setback, that those are approved with the condition that the pipe that we have coming out of the pond here, that be lined with brown stone to, uh, provide a better, uh, passageway for amphibians and mammals, which we have done, and that's in the plans that we have submitted back to Public Works as well as to our state applications. Uh, what we've done, it's already been mentioned, but we've had comments, uh, that we've addressed with Public Works and staff, we've also had a TRC meeting, uh, we've submitted those, uh, we did turn around and get those back to the town so they could put in your package for last Friday. Um, since that time, there has been one other review, and those are the conditions that you have in here relative to what, uh, staff and, and Public Works wants to see. Plus, we want to have the state come back and look at the application because we may have some other changes. Point being, although there may be a lot of comments that came back from Public Works that still need to be addressed, we already have addressed those. They still, that has to be confirmed by Public Works, if the case, but they're not, there's no deal breakers. There's things that we need to add to the plan, and we have done so, and we think that will pass muster once Public Works has the chance to, to look at that. In terms of the disposition of the open space, we believe that it is possible to have that as a condition of approval, that this be taken over by the Escataqua Land Conservancy with the, for the easement and the, the land by the selectmen. That's how we've approached it from day one, knowing what sort of resources there are available. The information that needs to be taken care of is the actual easement itself, and, and that information, I think that if the review of department as well as the town attorney on that, on that, I think that still can be handled as a condition of approval for that as well. As far as the maintenance, long-term maintenance, we have talked about it at some other meetings here. It is something that is primarily driven by the new AOT rules. But that is something that's going to happen in the future, and I think that's why Public Works is, uh, has been, is bringing it up, because it's something that's not going to go away. It isn't as site-specific as one might think. In this particular case, we have what would amount to two detention basins. One is infiltrating and holding back some water, and the other is just holding back the water. We may have gotten away with only one of those basins prior to the AOT rule change. That change took effect in the beginning of 2009, and I don't know, but this may be the first application that has come before you with, with the rule changes. There are a lot of different things that can be done that are mechanical, require a lot of maintenance, and those are pretty much relegated to commercial sites where someone is there all the time doing those maintenance. It's not a public site or a public road. In this particular case, as Megan had indicated, we did have a four-bay area here, which is a holding area to clean up the storm water before it goes into the basin in the back. At their suggestion, we did increase the sumps so they wouldn't have to maintain the four bay at all. She's already talked about the, the depth of the sumps and how that might be a little bit excessive, but that is one way that we were able to do that. This project does not have any mechanical features that have to be maintained. We have done a project in the Woodland Village, a site planned for a multifamily. There we had underground treatment infiltration as well as pre-treatment through mechanical means. That's all the private development, and that's all, all the maintenance there is taken care of by the development itself. This does not have that. What it really does have, though, is, is twice the amount of area that we're holding water back in. And if nothing else, that requires twice the amount of maintenance. The amount of maintenance is dependent on how the site is taken care of while it's being developed, how it's established before construction, and how it's left after construction. I realize that there's a component for Public Works besides, you know, plowing the roads and, and sanding and all that on the roads. The drainage system, maybe it's twice as much as what it used to be, but it's not because of the site itself, it's not because of the design that we elected to do that's more elaborate. And I think all towns are working with this. Unfortunately, there's a lot of towns that don't know about it, because there's not a lot going on in some of those towns. I think that it would be fair at this point to consider the application we have the way it is, and that the town should work on a procedure going forward. Maybe this is going to end up being some sort of impact fee per development that'll be assessed because of drainage. City Manchester, I believe, is trying to get a storm water utility through the Public Utilities Commission. So they have their Manchester Water Works, and they're going to have a storm water utility so they can go anywhere in town and regulate that. There may be outside sources that are going to come in and utility companies that are going to maintain on the contract with the town. But I think at this point in time, for us, for the one project that we're doing, to require us to do that, I think is, I don't consider that to be the right thing to do. And with everything that's been said, I think that we are in a position where we can leave the conditions of approval, and we'd like the board to consider a conditional approval tonight.
Members of the board, do we have any questions of Mr. Mitchell? It doesn't prevent you from asking a question later on, though.
Well, I mean, in regards to this condition of, of approval, I under, I mean, Phil can say what the Board of Selectmen are. Where is, as far as you know, the ELC in regards to this? Do you know?
As was, based on emails, discussions today, they're still waiting to give it to their, their land division, even though David has indicated that's already been done.
Right.
And, but that formality has to be there. They said that, if I remember the dates correctly, that's something they're going to try to do to get to them and get back to the full board at the earliest, probably in the beginning of November. We're not, as the applicant, we're proponents of having them take it. We're not shopping around to see who can take it, who can't. This is the condition upon which we want to get it, because we think it's the most beneficial to the, the open space, to both have the town own it and Escataqua to do it. And there is a component of maintenance, a fee that has to be paid to Escataqua by the applicant so they can have perpetual maintenance on it. We think this is the right thing to do, and that's why we're not concerned about having that a condition of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Carl.
Eric, I just had a question. With regards to your state approvals, where, where are they right now pending-wise?
The subdivision has been submitted. AOT has been up there for three or four weeks. I don't know if it's been assigned yet. Wetlands has been either submitted in the last day or so, or, or will be tomorrow. That is, Shower's office is submitting that, and they have all the information on it. We are, or have submitted copies from the AOT, our original application, we had plans before, we changed them for the comments of the town, so we're going to dovetail those back in and substitute those. So there's, everything that the town has looked at is what AOT is going to be looking at. But it's been about three to four weeks of AOT.
Any other members of the board? Yes, Megan.
There's just one thing I had noticed before I came tonight that I wanted to bring up relating to waivers. You have the waivers listed, and one waiver I'm afraid needs to be requested or not, is that the well radii overlap the drainage easement areas in two spots.
It's on the plan.
So our rules do not allow that. Typically, it's something I would say, not allowed, no waiver, you know, I usually am really against that. It happens to overlap in the two spots where there's incoming treatment swells to pick up water, where I had asked those features to be removed, but it's the AOT rules that are forcing them to be there. What's happening is it's two, two different lots in two different spots where the water could naturally just sheet off and flow down to the low area, okay? But instead of doing that, the AOT rules, if I'm correct, require a certain amount of infiltration. So there's small little grass swells beside two lots, and I don't remember the number off my head, where the lots are sheeting, the water's getting picked up and brought to the treatment units. So I had requested those features to be removed so it could just sheet flow naturally, because there's hundreds of feet, I think. But I was told that they're trying to meet the number of infiltration or something like that, so they're there. So the point of not having an overlapping well radius on a drainage easement is that the town doesn't want to get into the whole salt contamination issues and things like that. Where it would matter is if you have a well radius overlapping, say, an outlet type easement, you know what I mean? Then you have outlet water that could potentially have salt contamination in it. In this case, it's overlapping two grass swells where it's just water right off of the lot, has nothing to do with the road. So I don't see it as an issue, but I still think you might need to request a waiver for that, so I'm just bringing it up. I just noticed it tonight because I chatted with Mike a year ago before I came here, and we were just looking at everything, and we brought up together, we were talking about the whole overlapping well radiuses and, you know, we felt strongly that those were supposed to overlap, but we looked at the maintenance and, and talked about it, and so that's really the comment that came out of it as well. There's two spots that overlap in the drainage easement, so that just may need to be addressed somehow, whether they have to be requested or however you want to do it. I just wanted to bring that up.
That is a requirement to do that, and I trust that it is, that we would, you know, ask that also to be a consideration as a waiver. I think one of the areas that she's talking about is in this area, right after we cross the brook, start going back uphill. These two lots have runoff that goes down this way. There's no road runoff going in, but we have to put our, we have to treat this water coming off of the lot. Before, we'd think water just used to go, but this area has to be treated, and we have a well on this lot with a radius that would go into that area. But as Megan had indicated, it's not the same as the well going into the road where there's road salt, or where there's an outlet to a pipe taking water away from the road or roadside ditch, which might have some salt in it.
It's that spot too, so there's three now.
What's that?
There's three. It's off of Lot Two to the little grass well, off of Lot Three to the infiltration basin, and off of Lot Twelve, the grass well. So when you look at the main huge pipe that goes, you know, connects the wetlands, the lot to the right, the lot to the left, and then you go to the end of cul-de-sac in the lot closest to the drainage access road out to the detention pond, that well is outback and connects to that. So there's three spots there. Yeah, sorry, so lots Twelve, Two, and Three, they overlap the drainage easement areas. I just don't want in any way think that we're setting a precedent of allowing that, because I, I'm usually, you know, pretty hard on moving those. But again, these are new features, they're there only to collect the water and, you know, make those numbers work, and I don't see concern with any contamination in that kind of case. And someone's going to add if they want from the board if they disagree with that, but we're trying to play devil's advocate and look at both sides and, you know, look at the purpose of our rules and, you know, do they apply in this case?
Thank you.
Chairman, just to point on this one here as well. The house is here and it goes downhill towards the brook, but we can no longer let the water runoff, even though part of it's through an area that then would not be disturbed. We have to collect that and get it into the system. We can't, normally, we just let it go, but we can't let it go and have the numbers, get the numbers to work. So that's another area where the runoff is only coming from the person's lot itself, so well radii going into that is, is not water coming from the public at all.
I'd like to give the, thank you, Eric. The public, the public hearing was continued from our last meeting, and I'd like to avail the public a comment, an opportunity to speak and reference this project. Is there anybody here wishing to speak and reference this particular proposed project? David?
I just want to answer a question that Barbara had asked. The LPC committee voted on January 11th, 2010, to recommend this project to the Board of Directors. It's in the minutes of the January meeting of the LPC committee, so there's electronic records and writing this instead.
Okay, thank you. There is nobody from the public wishing to speak and reference this project? Not wanting to close the public hearing if this hasn't moved forward this evening. I'd like to hear from members of the board in terms of preference in how to deal with this particular project. Anybody wish to speak first, or I'll go around a roll? Jim?
I have a, well, I have a question on a specific issue. It's the waiver of the length of the road. I understand that, why the applicant wants that, but are we, is there any basis here for granting the waiver and denying it on the next applicant? Why would we do that here?
Would it, would it be because of the size of the lot and the, and the, the concerns about preserving the open space? Brian?
I know one concern is on length of cul-de-sacs, just fire access. And so in this case, they've located a cistern somewhat in the middle of the project, so, you know, once the fire truck comes in, they can access it and then access any of the projects using that cistern. So that being said, it sort of takes away the need for, you know, a shorter cul-de-sac or, you know, needing to be able to access fire facilities from the exterior on the, on the main road or something like that.
It's at about Station 700, which is about right in the middle. Jim?
Did the fire department have comments on that, or were they satisfied with the?
Yes, they were satisfied. We had done a TRC meeting with them prior to writing up the report and everything, and they had given the guidance on how big the cistern needed to be and everything, something.
If I recall, that's really the driving issue on cul-de-sac length, is emergency access? Do we have other concerns, or?
I don't specifically remember the board discussing any other particular concerns other than...
As to the cul-de-sac.
On, on cul-de-sacs, yes. Lowell?
Yeah, I think one other factor there too, as far as cul-de-sacs go, is that we have typically encouraged, you know, connections, you know, through to another road. And having that cul-de-sac limit, I think I said, you know, if you're going to go further than that, we really want you to connect another road. But, you know, another factor in this case, I think, too, is just, as somebody had said, you know, like the size of the open space and not being made available to the town, I think is also a mitigating factor there.
Okay. Any other members of the board?
And follow-up to that, Brian, could you just go, go back through the waivers again in regards to the requests and why we should grant them?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I, if I can read them, I think the, on the latest go-around, I think the length of cul-de-sac is the only waiver that we had on the plan. I think the other ones relative to vertical curves and other things have been taken care of. Megan had commented, but I think we changed those. Initially, those were on the original designs and required. I don't think they're required now. Only length of cul-de-sac and what Megan has brought up about the...
The well radius?
The well radius.
So the speed limit reduction to 25 is?
We have not asked for that.
Okay.
There's just two waivers.
Yes.
Megan?
I was just going to state that in our rules now, we have a new column for roadway design standards, which is low-volume roadways, particularly cul-de-sac roads that have no potential for people connection, and that's how this falls. So there, you know, the roadway design, the K-values, things like that, as long as they meet the ash-toe low-volume road rules, then we allow that, and that's why we've added that in here. It was something that started happening, and during one of our revisions of the Planning Board Development Regulations, we added that so that we could reference the low-volume rules. So if our, if they didn't fall under the main local and they fell under low volume, it was still okay. So I don't think a waiver is required for any of those first three, or even eight, the K-value, because again, if you, if you look, like I'm looking, if I have the right version, page 42, you know, the K-factor has like, you know, five stars, and then the note down below says, "The minimum per ash-toe low volume." So as long as they meet the minimum per ash-toe low volume, then they're okay. At least that's how I interpret our, that's how I interpret these.
That's fine. That's what we asked you to do? Other members of the board wishing to comment, ask a question?
Well, I'd like to just make a comment while public hearing is open, and I'm not sure that it's material because the applicant has agreed to it as a condition. There may be some technical correct statements in what David say, but the, just the PLC Land Protection Committee is meeting again on this project on Monday, and it's anticipated that it would be at least a few months before it wound its way from conditional approval to final approval because the PLC board requires all of the documents to be done, done before they approve it, which would mean it would have to be worked out between PLC and the town. And I know there haven't been any discussions between PLC and the town, so I'm not saying that what David said is incorrect, but that thought that this is going to be unapproved by PLC even at their next meeting is not, it's not going to happen. But I think the applicant has sort of said they're willing to work with it anyways, but the board should just be aware of that. And I don't, and I wanted to say that during public comment. And I don't know what the town anticipates it will be to address it because I do know how the agendas are this time of year for the Board of Selectmen. My other comment is, I do think, and that we approved a project, which was a private development on Bog Road that provided for public access. And that was part of the docs, actually, that we had to approve in conjunction with an extension request, that the applicant actually got those all done when they came in for the extension request. But I'm pretty sure that's private, was the private development that allowed public access on walking trails and other things. So it has been done.
So as far, as far as the open space, who's going to hold the paper?
It still has not been determined.
Well, what's the PLC's position on the whole thing, David? I'm just want to clear on it.
As I understand it from presentation, it's been to committee, it's been approved by committee, but not have been approved by, I'll call it, the leadership, or people in leadership roles at PLC. Does that make sense?
What's been approved? Ownership by the parcel or the easement over the parcel?
The owner, the, the parcel ends up getting owned, the plan is, at this time, that the town would own the property.
Okay.
And then the conveyance would be of the easement to PLC to management, which is why there's talk about the donate, you know, the donation to PLC for the maintenance in perpetuity, which is part of what PLC will have to address. But it goes to the, as David said, it goes to the town, and the easement goes to PLC, and PLC has to negotiate with the town and the terms of that order.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
David, would you like to correct anything there?
Just one other observation on that. Well, historically, the PLC does not want to enter into an easement when a property is held by a homeowners association, right?
Correct, and they will not, I can, they probably will not.
That's another reason why we would want it to be held by the town. But the bigger issue is because if it's held by the town, it can now be made available publicly without any conflict with the homeowners association. And that's much cleaner, much simpler, you know. Otherwise, you're faced with questions down the road from homeowners saying, well, why am I assessed? And it wouldn't be much, but they would say, why am I being assessed property tax on some proportional representation of this open space when in fact it's made available as a public resource to the town? That would be a fair question. I mean, we've seen this time after time, we proved roads, for example, that, well, yeah, we're going to hold those privately, but a few years down the road, they come back to the town. The same sort of thing is going to end up happening here. But I just want to make that clear. And I also want to make clear that in an email that I saw today, there was, I'm sorry to say it, but there was misinformation, misunderstanding within the PLC. There, we were, the individuals corresponding were not aware that the Land Protection Committee has already considered this, already voted, already made the approval, which is ending January 10th.
I'm going to get into it.
Again, that's documentation that we can come up with and show you.
Okay.
Well, since it's not here, we really can't do anything with it, David, unfortunately, I suppose. It's a good thing to know, and it's a good thing to work towards, but I think that's what it is right now.
All, the only point I'm trying to make is we're not sturdily starting from ground zero up here, which is, some of the information I saw today was suggesting that, that this is being taken up for the first time at the next Land Protection Committee meeting. In fact, that was how it was proposed on the agenda for that meeting, and that's entirely false. It was already voted on 10 months ago.
Okay, all right. I'm going to just ask the public if there's anybody out there wishing to speak and reference this project because I'm going to ask the board if we, if we do desire to close the public hearing, and whether we feel that there's a need to, to carry this forward. Jim?
Well, if we close the public hearing, then we've closed out Mr. Mitchell, and he's, if he can speak, then so can the public, even though it's a theoretical, given the vast multitude that's attending. But I, if we think we're going to go back to him with questions, we should keep it open. Which doesn't mean we can't deliberate while we're still in public session. But don't, don't close it too early.
Well, I didn't want to. That's where I was going with it. Because I think there's some discussion, probably still has to transpire on some of these issues. Carl?
My understanding that if the PLC is involved and homeowners, homeowners association is discussed and implemented, the PLC would not want to take over this.
It depends on the responsibilities of the homeowners association. The homeowners association, if we're required to be informed, may have specific duties, I suspect, that we, that we impose upon them to do, such as the maintenance of the drainage.